Meeting to order. I am Superintendent Dr. Monica Merritt. Welcome to the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five PCCS Board of Education meeting. Now, the first portion of our meeting this evening is the Board Organizational Meeting. A portion of the organizational meeting is dedicated to the establishment of officers for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. I'd like to begin by giving Board members the opportunity to introduce themselves to you, beginning on my right with Member Boss.
Jennifer Boss, welcome.
Good evening, Judy Westra.
Good evening, I'm Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Christensen, welcome.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard. It's nice to see everyone.
Amin Ahmed, welcome.
All right, I'd like to introduce my administrative assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here to capture our minutes. Also, Mr. John Krieger, who takes care of our video and technology needs. We want to thank him for being here this evening as well. Like the remaining members of the core team to begin introducing themselves with Mr. Tiscuits.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Kurt Tiscuits, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, welcome.
Good evening, Jill Minnick. I serve as Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, Abdul Madun, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement.
All right, at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite a motion for the adoption of the agenda for the organizational meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Superintendent, I would like to adopt the agenda for our organizational meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. I like that. The agenda for the organizational meeting will be adopted as presented. So this evening, I am very happy to be able to turn over this gavel to the next one among us who would like to be the president and be considered for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth office. I think at the last meeting, you all kind of talked about your officer positions and established if there's some level of interest in that position. If there is anyone else that would like to be nominated tonight as well, that is open. So I'd like to begin by inviting a motion for the nomination of the President of the Board of Education for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. As a reminder, there is not a need for a second for nomination.
I would like to nominate Lauren Christensen to be President.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Congratulations, Madam President. Please assume your duty.
I'll give it a smack just on your behalf. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay, I'm happy to kind of take over this portion of the meeting. We're going to move on to the Vice President. So I would now like to invite a motion for the nomination of Vice President of the Board of Education for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. And as a reminder, there is no need for a second for nomination.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Anupam Chakshuk to be Vice President.
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for the votes. Those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. Okay, I would now like to invite a motion for the nomination of Secretary of the Board of Education for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Are there any nominations for Secretary?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Judy Westra to be Secretary.
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the votes. Those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Motion carries, six-zero. Okay, last but not least, I would like to now invite a motion for the nomination of the Treasurer of the Board of Education for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Are there any nominations for the Officer of Treasure?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Patrick Keough for Treasurer of the Board of Education.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I would call for the votes. Those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion carries, six-zero. All right, now we're going to move on to the remainder of our organizational meeting. And if you recall, last year, we went through each of these items and I've asked for each Board member to kind of round robin or popcorn style, help me through this because it's quite lengthy and I know not everybody wants to hear me talk all night. So we will move to item number four, Bylaws Number oh-one-six-four dot one and oh-one-six-four dot two, Time, Place, and Notification of Meetings. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt bylaws numbers oh-one-six-four point one and oh-one-six-four point two, Time and Place and Notification of Meetings.
Can I please have a second?
A second.
It was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Member Picard. I'm going to start to my left. Member Ahmed, do you mind reading these bylaws for us, please?
How far she goes?
She goes through bylaws, just the two headings, and then we'll go through our vote. Okay.
Well, we have.
And then we'll move on to number five, and then Member Picard will read it, and then Member Six.
Is she going through the whole number four?
Yeah.
Bylaws number zero-one-six-four point one and zero-one-six-four point two, Time, Place, and Notification of Meetings. It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Picard to adopt the following bylaws. Bylaws number zero-one-six-four point one, Regular Meetings, Time, Place, and Notification. Regular meetings of the Board of Education of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Wayne and Washtenaw Counties, Michigan, shall be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. Exceptions, there will only be one meeting in July, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and one meeting in December, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, beginning at seven PM at the following location, except as agreed herein, unless otherwise directed by a majority vote of the members. The E.J. McLendon Educational Center, four-five-four South Harvey Street, Plymouth, Michigan, Do you want me to read the next one?
Do you mind continuing, please?
Not at all. Bylaw number zero-one-six-four point two, Special Meetings, Time, Place, and Notification. Special meetings of the Board of Education of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Wayne and Washtenaw Counties, Michigan, may be called by the President of the Board or any two members thereof by serving on the other members a written notice of the day, time, and place of such special meetings, or by a majority vote of the Board. Public notice of each meeting of the Board of Education shall be given by posting a copy of the notice on the message board by the front entrance to the E.J. McLendon Educational Center, four-five-four South Harvey, Plymouth, Michigan, at least eighteen hours prior to the time of the meeting. The Executive Assistant to the Board of Education or other central office staff in her absence shall be appointed the designee for posting notices.
Sorry, it was me.
That's okay. Okay, thank you very much for reading both of those. And it looks like we're going to vote on both of those together. So those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, the motion carries, six-zero. Okay, next up, we have, is this the continuation?
Yeah, we need to continue number four.
I see, okay. So I need a motion to direct the Executive Assistant of the Board of Education to advertise bylaws number zero-one-six-point, excuse me, zero-one-six-four point one and zero-one-six-four point two in the Detroit Newspaper Agency newspapers. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we direct the Executive Assistant of the Board of Education to advertise bylaws numbers zero-one-six-four point one and zero-one-six-four point two in Detroit Newspaper Agency newspapers.
Can I please have a second?
Second.
So it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Secretary Westra. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. Okay, on to item number five, Authorize Signatures for School District Business. Can I please have a motion to authorize the following signatures for school district business?
Madam President, I move that we authorize the signatures for school district business.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Member Boss. Member Picard, do you mind reading that for us, please?
Okay, documents, A, Administrator Contracts, President, Secretary, or Superintendent, these are the authorized signatures for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. Oh, sorry. B is Teacher Contracts, one is Probationary, and two is Continuing Tenure. Probationary is by President, Secretary, or Superintendent, and number two, Continuing Tenure is by President, Secretary, or Superintendent. C, Motor Vehicle Titles, and those are authorized signatures by Superintendent, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. D, Land Contracts, will be authorized by President, Secretary, or Superintendent. E is Deeds to Real Estate, and that's authorized by President, Secretary, or Superintendent. F, Leases and Easements, and that's authorized by President, Secretary, Superintendent, or Chief Finance and Operations Officer. G is Deposit and Investment Accounts, authorized by President, Treasurer, Superintendent, Chief Finance, and Operation Officer, Executive Director of Finance and Accounting. And H, Vendor Contracts, would be authorized by Superintendent, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Thank you. Okay, those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. On to item number six, Considering the Following Resolutions. A, Naming Depository Investments of Monies and Naming Signatories for All Funds. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we name the depository investment of monies and naming signatories for all funds.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Secretary Westra. Treasurer Keough, do you mind reading this first section, please?
It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Westra that the Treasurer and/or Chief Finance and Operations Officer be authorized to deposit all monies for the funds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools in the following banks. Community Financial Credit Union, Flagstar Bank, Huntington National Bank, J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., Michigan Liquid Asset Fund Plus, PNC Bank and PNC Capital Markets, LLC, Public Trust Advisors, LLC, the Bank of New York Mellon Trust, N.A., the U.S. Bank, N.A. And further, to invest all monies of all funds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools in investments authorized under Section one-two-two-three of the Michigan School Code of nineteen-seventy-six as amended. And further, that these banks be requested, authorized, and directed to honor checks and other orders for the payment of money drawn in the name of Plymouth Canton Community Schools against the named funds when bearing facsimile signature of Treasurer Keough and the facsimile signature of President Christensen. And further, that the Huntington National Bank, Bank of New York Mellon, UMB Bank, N.A., and U.S. Bank, N.A. be designated as the paying agents for bonds of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools as required. And further, a blanket position bond is required for all school district employees in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars and the cost of the bond to be provided by the school district.
Thank you. Okay, those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. Okay, moving on to Naming General Counsel. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we name the General Counsel.
Can I please have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Secretary Westra. Member Westra, could you please read this one?
It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Westra to appoint legal counsel for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year, Collins and Blaha Law Firm, P.C., General Counsel.
Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. Okay, on to C, Naming Other Specific Legal Counsel as Appointed by the Board of Education. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we name other specific legal counsel as appointed by the Board of Education.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Member Picard. Member Boss, do you mind reading this section, please?
It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Picard to appoint other specific legal counsel as appointed by the Board of Education for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. In addition, the Board of Education has the right to name other legal firms during the course of the year as it deems necessary. Clark Hill, P.L.C., Lacy and Jones, L.L.P., La Pointe and Associates, P.C., Miller, Canfield, Paddock and Stone, P.L.C., Thrun Law Firm, P.C.
Thank you very much. Okay, those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. On to Section D, Naming School District Auditor. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we name the School District Auditor.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Treasurer Keough, and it was a close tie. I'm going to say it was Member Boss seconded that. Member Ahmed, do you mind reading this section, please?
Naming School District Auditor. It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member, did we say Boss?
Boss, yes.
Okay. To appoint Plant Moran, L.L.C., Certified Public Accountants as the School District Auditors for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-sixth school year.
Thank you. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. On to Section E, Naming School District Bond Financial Advisor. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we name the School District Bond Financial Advisor.
Can I have a second?
Okay, second.
It was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Member Picard. Member Picard, do you mind reading this section, please?
Okay, it was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Picard to appoint P.F.M. Financial Advisors, L.L.C. as the school district's bond financial advisor for the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-sixth school year.
Thank you. Okay, those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. Okay, we're on to Section Seven, Designate Routine Advertisement. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we designate the routine advertisement.
Can I please have a second? Now, second it. Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Member Picard. Treasurer Keough, do you mind reading this?
It was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Picard that the Detroit Newspaper Agency or the Michigan Chronicle Newspapers be designated for the following routine advertisements. A, Notice of Budget Hearing and Truth and Taxation Hearing. B, Invitation for Bids. C, Request for Proposals. And that the bond buyer or the Detroit Legal News as required be designated for publication of A, Call for Redemption of Bonds, B, Sale of Bonds, C, Sale of Tax Anticipation Notices, and that the invitation for bids for major renovations, additions, and new construction, Public Act two-thirty-two of June twenty-first, two thousand and four requires schools to post construction solicitations for a minimum of two weeks on the state of Michigan, Sigma Michigan website.
Thank you. Okay, those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. And that concludes our portion of the agenda that's dedicated to the organizational meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your help through that portion. We are going to move on to Section A of our regular board meeting, Adoption of the Agenda and Approval of the Consent Agenda. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consented agenda, Act item twenty-six oh-seven oh-one.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Westra. Dr. Merritt, can you please take us through the agenda?
Thank you, President Christensen. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. I'm so pleased to introduce a slate of champions for your consideration this evening as new hires, as well as the consideration of some resignations. We also have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on June the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. Mr. Madun, can you take us through human resources?
Yes, I can. Well, it's that time of year, so we have quite a few, quite a few people being hired today. So if you, the new hires are in a crowd, I'm going to say your name if you can stand. So once we get through everybody, then I'm going to take everybody out to the hallway, and we have some sweet treats for you to take, to take home with you. So first, I will start with Emily Blasilio. She's a pre-K GSRP teacher at Gallimore. Madeline Burns, a math teacher at Plymouth. Andy Castro, art teacher at Holman. Jacqueline Kosick, a pre-K GSRP teacher at Canton. Anna Leslie, a resource room teacher at Discovery. Andrea Markwood, a GSRP teacher at Gallimore. Chad Still, art teacher at Holstein and Tonda. Eric Vanston, a math teacher at Canton. Abigail Wizolowski, a GSRP teacher at Holman. And Sarah West, a GSRP teacher at Dotson. In addition, we have several other hires. We have Brian Alford, who's been hired as the Dean of Student Support at East Middle We have Jennifer Curry, who is hired as the Chief, is hired as the Chief Academic Officer. Kathy Jax, who we all know, who is being, who is moving up to the payroll supervisor Jessica Savage, who was the new Assistant Principal at Canton High School. And those are all the new hires.
All right, maybe we welcome everybody.
So everyone that came, when we get the hallway, they'll take everybody out.
Thank you, Mr. Madun. Okay, we're moving on to our Board Committee Reports in Action. Up first is the President's Report. I did not prepare anything, just, you know, because it's our organizational meeting, so we will be short and sweet, and we'll skip on to the next sections here. So historically, at the organizational meeting, we run through each of the committees. The committee chairs, the Board Committee Chairs are appointed by the Board President, and so those appointments will happen likely in the next week or so. So if anyone does have interest in becoming a committee chair, please email me by Friday of this week, and we will make our selections very soon. But I have asked each of our former Board Committee Chairs just to provide a brief description of each committee. So first up, we have Student Performance and Achievement Committee. Member Westra, do you mind telling us a little bit about that one?
The Student Performance and Achievement Committee is a standing committee of the Board of Education, and it is responsible for considering changes to the instructional program in pursuit of the district's strategic goals, which include curriculum resources and course updates, research, and best practices to support the pre-K through twelve instructional programs, out-of-country field trips, and evaluation of student data and gap analysis while ensuring that there is transparency and community involvement in this process, and we are the most fun committee. Despite what Patrick Keough said.
I love, I love the rivals we've created through our committee discussions. Thank you very much, Member Westra. Okay, moving on to Policy Committee. Member Sudu is actually traveling and not able to attend today, so I've asked Member Ahmed to share a little bit about policy.
I think tenure on committee should be counted for what's most fun, but anyways, we'll see. So the Policy Committee is responsible for reviewing and developing policies for the school district, and it is Dr. Merritt and her team then who decide how those policies will be implemented. We need to make sure that the policies align to the current law. We review the current policies to make sure they're relevant, and we also develop new policies for the district based on need, and we refer the policies then to the full Board for adoption. In terms of membership for this committee, there's usually two to three board members, two or three community members, and the Chief Human Resource Officer, Mr. Madun, helps as the core staff person from Dr. Merritt's team on this committee. We do have legal counsel sometimes join us and other relevant staff members when either we need their input or whether they want to provide input, they will also join as needed. And we are definitely the most fun committee.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to Finance and Operations Committee. Member Keough.
Considering tenure on the committees, I've been there for more than ten years on Finance and Operations Committee, so I think that we're certainly in the running for the most fun committee. We also meet probably the most often. The Finance and Operations Committee, we provide guidance and direction to the Board of Education regarding the business operations for Plymouth Canton Community Schools, specifically in the areas of finance, accounting, budgeting, operations, and transportation services. Those specific areas are the budget preparation and management, the financial planning and forecasting, cost reduction strategies, operating efficiencies and financial analysis, capital strategy and development, efficient and safe and cost-effective facilities management, PCCS district business operations, custodial and maintenance operations, and student transportation services. Our governance is that we report to the, to the committee as a whole, in other words, to the full Board. We provide minutes as required, and we publish those meeting minutes and agendas. We typically meet at least once per month. In general, we meet before the Thursday before every board meeting. So it is a very frequent meeting, and in fact, as in the sample of how exciting Finance and Operations is, we're one of the only committees that's met since our last board meeting. And we met last, our Thursday, June twenty-sixth, to discuss the upcoming Crossing Guard Services Agreement that'll be on the agenda for this evening, as well as some exciting topics of the purchase of Tomcat Floor Scrubbers and six John Deere tractors. So come and join the excitement that is Finance and Operations.
Way to sell it. Thank you so much. Moving on to Student Voice in Action Committee, I will say our student co-chairs are both enjoying their summer break, so I'm happy to stand in and tell you a little bit about Student Voice in Action. So the Student Voice in Action Committee meets once a month. They're responsible for elevating student voice and providing students with the necessary resources to allow the implementation of meaningful and positive change here at the school district through the Board of Education. So some of the goals of this committee really are to create that direct link between the school board and the student population, and to actively implement student input regarding the Board of Education's student policies, providing students from all backgrounds with an outlet to elevate their voices, and to really promote equity and equality during the students' times at school. It is a student-led committee. We do have board members who do attend those meetings, but it is led by our students. We have our two co-chairs, Josh and Arjun, that will serve this year and next. In addition to serving on that committee, members of SVA also attend the other board level committees too, to provide that student voice. That's more of a rotating, I think, membership and attendance, but we, we do invite them at the other committees. I guess, let's see, in terms of governance, this committee reports to the PCCS District Committee as a whole, as we said, this, a regular board business meetings, and they also publish committee meetings and agendas and their meeting minutes. I, I think this rivals all of your committees for the most fun committee.
Let's just all agree that SVA is the best committee.
Yeah, they're pretty great, and they meet, they meet once a month as well.
We're competing for second place.
Very good.
True.
Okay, all right, and that actually concludes our committee reports here. So thank you all for providing that brief description. And again, as a reminder, if anyone is interested in chairing one of these committees, please let me know by this week, Friday, via email or phone call. Okay, up next, we're going to move to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Merritt.
Citizens' comments first? Do you have any?
I think citizens' comments follow.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Yep.
All right, here I am. I thought I was president for a minute. I forgot my role as the president. Well, you know, I never miss an opportunity to brag on our amazing students, so I'd like to begin this evening by celebrating the work of two PCEP graduates who were recognized for their academic achievements on July fourteenth, when the final round of National Merit Scholarship winners were announced. Plymouth High School graduate Sidharth Iyer and Salem High School graduate Juush Noor Dillon were awarded National Merit Grants from their chosen colleges, Wayne State University and Michigan State University. These scholarships are renewable grants for up to two thousand dollars for up to four years of undergraduate study. Iyer and Dillon join four other PCEP graduates who were named National Merit Scholars in previous rounds. So Psub's six National Merit Scholarships are the most in a single year for the park that I remember during my time here at PCCS. So please join me in celebrating our two additional grants. So proud, so proud of the work that they do. Now, it may be the middle of the summer, but it's never too early to start preparing for the return to school in the fall. I think I was a little sad this morning when I heard the commercial for Meyer to say, "Back to school," and I'm like, wait, we just ended. However, and we are excited to begin to welcome our students back. So this year's edition of the PCCS Summer Communication provides the information that all of our district families need to prepare for the upcoming school year. This includes our transportation, our food service, our enrollment details, and more. This communicator gives students and families information that they need to get the most out of learning, and this is actually the PCEP one for the park. It covers everything from scheduled pickup to school sports and extracurricular activities. So you can find both of these documents on the district website and through links on our social media channels. We appreciate our communications department for getting this information. We appreciate our Communications Department for getting this information out there for our families. When we think about our summer programs, it's been an absolute hit. Please just join me in taking a look at these pictures of our young people and celebrating their talents and skills, our dedicated staff that have really been a part of the summer learning programs. We want to thank them for their outstanding work that are really helping our students find fun ways to spend their summer while learning and growing together. From our Community Education Department's Popular Safety Town Program to our numerous camp offerings, students across our districts are having a wonderful opportunity to learn in exciting ways. When is the last day? Soon. So if anyone is interested, please let me know if you'd like to visit one of our summer programs. It's always just a great learning experience. We have our Back to School Bash coming up, and this is our opportunity to invite the PCCS community to join us in celebrating the start of a new school year. This annual tradition is a day filled with games, prizes, fun food, and all the information our families need about the exciting things that are happening in our district. So I want you to save this date. It will take place on Saturday, August 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We don't want any construction blocking the bus loop this year, so we're ready to go. And again, this bash is going to offer a great opportunity to meet our school and district leaders, members of the Board of Education, learn about the many programs that we have here in PCCS from preschool through high school and beyond. What a great way to start the new school year. So again, mark your calendars, and let's get ready for this school year to begin. I'm going to end this night without sadness, because I'm just going to say that this is a time for joy, although I've acted like a child in the fetal position for the last few months that my Beth Rell has announced her retirement. But I do want to say in her last meeting here, Beth, we are so, so grateful for your leadership here in our teaching and learning space. It was August of 2019 when we introduced and recommended for hire this champion for students. From day one, she had three rounds of interviews, but we knew that she was our person from the first day that we saw her. She captured our attention virtually, and that was a challenge, because everyone else was in person, but we knew that, again, she was our person. She led with the spirit of innovation, kindness, how to get to yes all of the time. And I think that she, we need to think about a position, and I think we all go into this work hoping to leave a space better than we found it. So I will say to you, my friend, job well done. You have succeeded in doing that. She is the chaser of our number, our fifth goal, I would say, in terms of making ourselves as PCCS leader in educational excellence, because that's what she strives to be. And again, you have left us better than you found us. I am forever grateful for you. I truly consider you my friend. And when you go to retirement, I know you're supposed to like leave us behind, but just keep my number on speed dial, so you can just check it on me. I can check it on you, make sure we're good. So again, Beth, thank you for all of the work that you have done, and we appreciate. And we're not going to miss you. We're not going to say goodbye. We're going to say we're going to continue to see. And I know Jen is still here. We're going to continue to see you. She is passing the torch to you, Jen, and really setting the foundation, and you're going to continue to take us to the next level. So Beth, again, we appreciate all that you have done. Thank you, my friend. Thank you. It's been my honor. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
I was just going to say, it's been my honor and my pleasure to serve the district for the last six years. And I'm, you know, we have an amazing program. We have an amazing school district. We have outstanding teams of folks from the classroom to the lunchroom to the bus stop, you know, all the way up to the superintendent. So I just, it's been my honor. So thank you all for having me. And, you know, as I always tell people, once you're mine, you're mine. So you're stuck with me, I'm like fungus. But thank you. I appreciate everyone. I know, that's uplifting, isn't it? I know, so you'll never forget that now. You always have to say something when you're leaving that people will be like, "Do you remember when Beth said something about being like fungus?" So there you go.
I will say, I always tell this story. Beth, with her innovation, came in my office early on with these, I don't even know the words, you know me in technology.
Virtual reality headset. It was Oculus Quest.
So I'm like, what is that? Let me try this thing on. Because she's like, this is what I'm bringing for our kids, student-centered and, again, always focused on innovation and taking us to the next level. I put that thing on my head. I was like, oh, my goodness! So I was like, yes, teach us, and let's get this for our students. And now you've brought us esports and just a whole, the whole innovation hub was the dream of Beth. And so seeing that come to reality again, we thank you, Beth. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay, so now we're moving on to Section D, Citizens' Comments. I'm not seeing any in the basket, so we will move on to Section E, Administrative Reports and Recommendations. So we have our Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick. Can you take us through this first topic, please?
Thank you, President Christensen. It's the time of our agenda where it's my pleasure to recommend to you for your consideration this evening those replacement floor scrubbers. It is just part of our routine work in our Facilities Department that we would recommend replacement equipment when it makes no longer any sense to repair old or obsolete equipment. So these new units would be deployed at Plymouth High School, Pioneer Middle School, and Discovery Middle School. This purchase will be made through the Omnia Purchasing Cooperative, and after applying on top of that a volume discount and free freight, the total cost is $46,837.50, and these funds will be funded by the 2526 Custodial Equipment Budget. This item was reviewed with Finance and Operations Committee on June 26th. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rice, our Facilities Manager, if there are any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. I will open it up to questions, starting with Member Voss.
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
We talked extensively about the floor scrubbers and had a great discussion in Finance and Operations. I'm super excited these are coming forward, and I have no additional questions.
Thank you. I have, I do have one question, and this might be a softball, but does, does the floor, is the floor scrubber compatible with our current flooring in each of these buildings? And is it compatible with any future maybe improvements with the additions, whether it's LVT or, you know, our standard VCT or rubber, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, the floor scrubber is compatible with any type of flooring. It just depends on, depends on the pad that you want to put on there and the chemicals you put in the tank. So it is, I don't want to say future-proof, however, it will suit our needs and have proven to be very reliable as we have three in service in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. That's an excellent question, as we look forward to our bond work, for sure. Thank you.
Okay, I was at the meeting, so I have, don't have any questions.
Member Ahmed?
No question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda for your consideration this evening is a recommendation for purchase of six John Deere lawn tractors. This is the first reading. It was reviewed at the June 26th FNO Committee Meeting. But we are seeking approval to purchase six new John Deere tractors. All of them are equipped with mower decks and snowplow attachments. These will replace outdated and non-functional units that we have throughout the district. So those usable parts from the existing equipment will be salvaged for future maintenance needs, and the remaining materials will be recycled. These will support year-round grounds maintenance at Field, Erickson, Farrand, Espister, Smith, and Tonda Elementary Schools, and the equipment will be procured from Hudson through the state of Michigan's MyDeal Cooperative Purchasing Program. Each tractor is priced at $7,746.24, each snowplow kit at $1,0297.46, for a total purchase cost of $54,262.14. And again, this, like the track, like the floor scrubbers, will be funded by the 2526 Maintenance Equipment Replacement Budget. And again, Mr. Rice is here for any questions you may have. Thank you. Member Voss, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Member Westra?
No questions.
Smith School is going to be really excited about getting a new tractor. We're excited, because their tractor's on its last legs, held together with duct tape and baling wire. So great project.
No, I do not have any questions.
No question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, well, thank you. We appreciate your yes votes that we are anticipating.
This will be back on the agenda in August for that second reading. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, moving on to action item number 26-07-02. Consider approval of a resolution for a Crossing Guard Services Agreement. This is a first and final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a Crossing Guard Services Agreement. It will be a first and final reading, and the action item is 260702.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Picard. Can you please take us through this one?
Yes, thank you, President Christensen. This evening, for your contemplation and consideration, is a Crossing Guard Services Agreement. This was reviewed at the June 19th and June 26th Finance and Operations Committee Meetings. We currently outsource our crossing guards to EDU staff, who recruits, hires, et cetera, and we're looking to shift that away to a turnkey solution for all over management, training, staffing and substitute staffing, all that is involved in a turnkey solution for management and provision of crossing guards at our 31 posts across the district. So with that, for more explanation and details, I am going to turn this over to our Director of Capital Projects and Facilities, Matt Lentz, and our District's Director of Student Safety and Security, Josh Meyer, for more information. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm Matt Lentz, and the Director of Facilities at PCCS. So, yes, for crossing guards, we have 31 current posts. One of the posts is actually, looks for additional, so there's actually 32 that we actually fill and we actually do on a day-to-day basis. Both those 32 posts are AM and PM crossing guards, so we have for the morning to-school and the morning home-from-school. Today, we are requesting approval to switch vendors from EDU staff to all city management services. EDU staff has had a historical problem filling all 32 posts across the district. They currently, on average, on day-to-day, fill about 17 to 20. This puts the burden of filling the remainder 12 to 15 posts on a PCCS. We currently use in the Facility Team, we'll use grounds employees or PEs in the mornings or in the afternoon. Sometimes we have to have the principal come out or someone from the administrative staff come out to help supplement and cover these posts that are not being covered. So this leaves us anywhere between 12 and 15 posts daily, generally in the morning, while everyone else is doing their other work that are not being filled. So this causes a considerable safety issue for our pupils that we have. We have... Mr. Mike? Oh, go back. Sorry, I'm never going to go with this thing. There we go. Oh, my apologies. So... We reached out to a third party. They are All City Management Services. They're a nationwide crossing guard company. They provide turnkey solutions to crossing guard issues in other districts around the nation that are having the exact same problems we're having with staffing and oversight. They have, will provide recruitment, background checks, training, equipment, insurance, supervision, subs, and they will do a daily oversight, and they will also do program oversight as well to make sure the needs of the districts and the needs of these posts are being filled. All City works with four Michigan school systems currently. All those school systems had the exact same struggles and the exact same challenges we are facing here at PCCS. All of them came back and said glowing reviews, looking to extend, or if not currently, negotiating longer extensions for this turnkey solution. Half of the submission for the contract, based off our agreement with the municipalities, 50% of the money that this contract will incur will be billed back to the municipalities as a part of an agreement with PCCS and the local municipalities. So as we go through this in the next slide, you're going to see kind of a little bit of a fundamental breakdown of program costs, what they're looking at, and kind of what the actual cost to the district is going to be, and what hours can be billed to the municipalities to help us fund said program. So, All City Management submitted a two-year contract option, valuing it a not-too-exceed year-one price of $352,581, broken down into $13,320 max billable hours at a rate of $26.47 all-in cost per post. So when we look at what we currently have going at the top with our EDU staff model plus internal overtime, EDU staff, our current contract is $50,240. Facilities Team specifically paid $184,000 in overtime to have PEs or grounds standing, doing the crossing guard service, equating to about 22% of all overtime paid by Facilities covering this crossing guard service. With the All City proposal, you can see the contract amount is up there at $352,581, less the 50% billable reimbursement to the municipalities at $176,290.50. Net total cost, $176,290.50 to PCCS. If you look at the bottom down there, that gives us a net savings of about $58,000 to PCCS. Assuming there's a, some admin fee that we're not really calculating in the overtime numbers, comes up to about $63,500 savings outsourcing this vendor and switching vendors to an all-in turnkey solution, first EDU staff, who's more of just a hiring and frontline management program, not doing all of the other services. Mr. Meyer, you want to talk about the safety issue and the references specifically?
Yeah, so when I came to the district, prior to coming to the district, I worked for Camp Public Safety Department, and crossing guards have been a challenge for many, many years, trying to fill those vacancies, trying to get crossing guards there. There's multiple sites across the district that require two crossing guards due to the complexity of the intersections and the traffic studies that were done in a lot of those intersections where some of them currently are not staffed with any crossing guard, and some of them are staffed with one crossing guard. So the goal through this is to try to get all of those fully staffed and get those safety issues addressed. Contacted numerous references, both in the state of Michigan, state of Wisconsin, tried to use neighboring to the best of our ability. But, but all of the references had positive, positive feedback. Plymouth Canton Schools is in somewhat of a unique situation in that the motor vehicle code places the responsibility of crossing guards on the municipal police departments. To not, not to get into the weeds too far, what occurred in 1976 is there was a lawsuit filed against the school district and the three municipalities over crossing guards. That lawsuit drug on for several years. At the time that the lawsuit was filed in 19, in the 1970s, there was only one municipality that had a full-time police department. That was the city of Plymouth. So under the motor vehicle code, they were the only municipality that could be compliant with that code that put the requirement of crossing guards on the municipal police department. Subsequent to that lawsuit being filed, there was a consent judgment that was ordered or agreed upon between the school district and the three municipalities that the school district would manage crossing guards, including the staffing, the training, the equipping, et cetera, and that those costs would be split 50/50 between the school district and the municipalities based on the intersectional responsibilities. So it gets a little bit tricky in the city of Plymouth and Plymouth Township because five of those intersections are shared by the two different municipalities. So what we've gone down, now done, is gone back and we've reviewed all of those intersections, all of those crossing guard sites. We've come up with a really comprehensive list of how those, how this cost sharing will occur. Five of those intersections will be split between two municipalities, kind of a three-way split, really, between the two municipalities, the city of Plymouth, Plymouth Township, and the school district. And then the bulk of those inter, the bulk of our 32 sites, 21 of them, I believe, are in Canton Township. So going through all of my role in this, contacting the different agencies that are in the municipalities that are using All City Management, speaking with some of the police departments that... speaking with some of the police departments that, that fall within those jurisdictions using All City Management, the positive, the feedback was positive. Some of the technology that All City Management is gonna bring and some of the challenges that we faced is, you know, we got thirty-two sites. So how do we ensure that a crossing guard is there every single hour that they're supposed to be there? We don't have the technology to do that. It really would require man-hours to go out and physically check those or have somebody reporting back to us that there was no crossing guard. Through All City Management, there's a geo-fencing system that's in place. So once the crossing guard receives the initial training and is assigned a crossing guard location, there is an app that is used, they're geo-fenced and so that they know, we know, the time that they walked into that geo-fence and the time that they left that geo-fence. And so we're able to go back and track that data to ensure that we have compliance with the crossing guards and, and working through some of those issues that we've historically had and dealing with, with trying to ensure that we have adequate coverage. The other challenge that's been very difficult for the district is meeting the training requirements. Because somebody has to provide that training, we have to bring the crossing guards in. The state of Michigan requires four hours of initial training for all crossing guards and then two hours of annual training every year for those crossing guards. So, we've had some challenges there. All City Management takes that responsibility on. And the biggest, the biggest win or piece in all of this is they take on all the liability of crossing guards and they, they, they exclude the district from that liability. So, because they're training, equipping and staffing those crossing guards, should something happen at that intersection, doesn't mean that the district isn't gonna get sued, but we're indemnified in that contract from, from that liability. And that liability falls on All City Management, whereas in our current situation through EDU staff, all they're doing, it's a pass-through, all they're doing is hiring and putting that person, we're still responsible for outfitting them, we're still responsible for providing with the necessary required equipment, we're still responsible for training them and we're responsible for all the liability with that crossing guard, should they, should they act outside of the scope of, of their training or should something happen at that intersection with the crossing guard or should something happen when there is no crossing guard there. So, that's what I can tell you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
From a contractual, getting back to, we have had some issues with billing and kind of invoicing the municipalities. As Mr. Meyer referenced, the geo-fencing, they will provide us all the data. So there will be indisputable backup that says we are going to attach this township, this many hours, at this rate, with all the documents behind it to say, this is what you owe us for man-hours, posts covered, man-hours worked. Along with in our invoicing from them, we will get these reports as well. So if we have questions or any sort of discrepancies, we're also able to say, show me the geo-fence report, show me your invoice and show me your backup. To kind of do a double-check, A, covering us from a financial, B, helping us gain that financial back and C, making sure our pupils have coverage that we're kind of lacking right now. From a hiring model, All City has said they will hire and take on all crossing guards that are currently employed, should they want to transfer over and become employee, employees of All City. In doing so, they'll receive a two-dollar-an-hour raise. And moving into year two, because I mentioned at the beginning, this was a two-year contract, there will be a three percent cost of living increase on top of the two-dollar-an-hour increase to come, to transfer from our employee over to All City. Year two, that brings that do-not-exceed-max billable number to three-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-three, again, broken down into thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-max billable hours at a rate of twenty-seven dollars twenty-six cents. Last two things, as I've thrown a lot at you. The staffing model. So we have asked for a ramp-up model of what that looks like from the day we sign the contract, assuming the board takes our recommendation and signs the contract and votes yes. We will sign the contract. Within forty-five days, they have said they expect to be fully staffed. At that point, they have also given us a forty-dollar-an-hour billable, I don't wanna call it a penalty, but it's a penalty for open positions. So if I still have to take a grounds person or a PE on overtime rate out to that site, we will get forty dollars an hour back off of the billable hours and off of that max total billable number. Thank you.
And I, I forgot to mention in references, when I, when, one of the questions that I asked was, was tried to ascertain whether the rate that we were getting from All City Management was comparable with other communities and, and it's very comparable. The, the average of, of the various municipalities that I contacted was, was between about twenty-four, twenty-five dollars an hour, all the way up to thirty-one dollars an hour. So we, I think we're getting a very comparable rate. Some of the lower rates were much smaller, much, much smaller contracts to ours. There is a very comparable community in another state that is at thirty dollars and seventy-five cents an hour billable rate currently.
Thank you for that, Josh. I also want to mention, if I may, that I just want to underscore your comment that this has been a, a concern for several years. And one of the other outcomes by going with this third party is the data and the reporting that they will offer so that we can substantiate at geo-fencing the attendance of the crossing guards so that we can better invoice our municipalities for that fifty-fifty share and receive their payments toward half of the cost that's quoted in your materials. As such, there's also a sixty-day exit clause for poor, poor performance.
Yes.
And they will track names and information on those folks if we decide, due to poor performance, that we want to bring that back and explore another model, whether it's with EDU staff again or, or whatever it may be. Those clauses have been added. Happy to take any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Voss?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for this. I have kids in the district who need crossing guards and have not had crossing guards at, at times, so I really appreciate that personally. Thank you.
Thank you for all of the thoroughness of the evaluation on this. I have only one question. So EDU staff currently posts district, posts open positions on the district website. Are they, is, is the new company still going to post through the district website job hiring? Or are they gonna use an outside service like Indeed?
So, yes, and I think the answer's both. They, the, one of the first conversation that Mr. Meyer and I had with them is, we get this done by casting a broader net. And that was kind of the same thing. They will use the website, they will use their own resources, they will use local resources to get as wide of a net and the eager person that really wants to be a part of this. So the, the short answer is both.
Okay, thank you.
Great, great question, Judy. So we had extensive conversations on this at FNO. In fact, the reason this is forward as a first and final is because we wanted to work through some things in this agreement to make sure that this was right. So I want to commend the administration for collaborating and working through those issues and bringing forward a, a better agreement and better process. The reason we're doing it as a first and final is because we want to get those crossing guards hired before the start of school. There were a few things that I wanted to, to comment on and I think that to get some clarification on. We had talked in FNO about a forty dollars per hour, you mentioned forty dollars per hour, but the contract itself is forty dollars per unstaffed location, so it's only forty dollars per day?
Per forty dollars per post is what that will be. So it will be a missed unfilled post. And that's why it probably, I probably stated down a per hour because this is kind of set up as a per post is one hour. So each post is essentially two hours a day with AM and after, and AM and PM. So that, that is the, that is the intent.
That's good. So that's, I just want to make sure I read this correctly. So in the contract, it says, "In the event contractor cannot provide reserve personnel for work at the assigned time and location, a penalty of forty dollars will be assessed per unstaffed location effective October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five." So that gives the ramp-up period, which is great and I appreciate that, that we've built in that, that time to let them get there. Are we sure that this is per shift?
Yes. Yes. We will verify as well, but I have already verified, I've already double-checked. So the short answer is yes. I will triple-check to ensure before we sign.
So just for context, I personally and some of the other board members on the FNO committee had some anxiety on this because we've seen problems where contractors have made grand promises and then not actually brought the, the staffing forward to support this. So I really appreciate All City and their commitment to provide a financial penalty in the event that they're not able to get that, that staffing. Because for us, having those crossing guards is key and paramount, as has been articulated from a safety concern, but it's also a huge burden on the district, taking our other staff out to serve those locations. So this is, gives me a lot more confidence that they're actually gonna perform. Because not only will we not have to pay for a position that they're there, there's actually a penalty associated with it. So that's a, a nice agreement. So, thank you.
I appreciate that context because that was my question, you know, reasoning for first and final made an assumption that obviously we need to get boots on the ground and hire folks, but I do appreciate that background. I also, like Member Voss, have some kids who, who utilize crossing guards and we, we noticed that last year, that there were some missing or we saw some familiar faces out there, you know, kind of standing in. So I do appreciate the district's, kind of move, the district moving this forward and, and realizing that, you know, student safety is, is our number one priority here and so this, this is really leaning into that. So I appreciate that.
No, no questions, just general commentary.
I don't have any questions. I was at the meeting and thank you guys for the thoroughness of your explanation.
Member Ahmed?
I just want to thank you for the thorough explanation. That was really helpful.
Okay. I will call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
I appreciate Mr. Meyer and Mr. Lentz' work together on this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're moving on to action item number twenty-six dash zero seven dash zero three, consider approval of a resolution for a PCEP pilot furniture purchase. This is a final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a PCEP pilot furniture purchase. Final reading, action item twenty-six oh seven oh three.
Can I please have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Westra. We did review this at our last meeting, but I will open it up for any additional comments, questions about this particular action item. Okay, hearing none. I will call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are moving on to, we don't need the citizens' comments overflow section, so we'll move on to section G, discussion. I did want to bring up one item here in discussion. This is something that we had mentioned in previous board meetings of wanting to do a summer board retreat or a board workshop. We have been in a conversation with a facilitator. She has shared some dates, so I'm wondering if we could all just peek at our calendars. And I'm gonna rattle off a couple of dates and I want to understand the team's availability. So let me know when your calendars are open and ready, if you're, if you're able. Okay, so, we have, there's several here, so bear with me. Monday, July twenty-first. And I assume that these are kind of post-work, kind of early...
Monday, July twenty-fourth?
I'm sorry. Monday, July twenty-first. And these are likely after, after normal business hours, after normal working hours, so in the early evening.
Yeah, and it's a three-hour workshop, so probably looking at a five to eight.
Five to eight, exactly. So we have, we have July twenty-first.
I'm available.
I'm available.
You can't make it at five? I can make it at five thirty.
Five thirty, eight thirty?
Five thirty, okay. I have availability as well on that date.
I have, have to find out my son's schedule because I have to pick up my wife from the airport.
Okay, there's more dates.
Or I make her take a taxi or something.
Totally fine. We have Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, or twenty-second. Oh my gosh, you guys, I can't read. July twenty-second.
That works fine for me.
I can't make it that date.
Is that next week?
Yes. Yes, that would be next week. We're looking to next week, but there are several more. We have Friday, July twenty-fifth.
Sounds like a Friday meeting with my board colleagues.
I know.
I'm going to music in the park.
Yeah.
I am, I would love to. I actually have a commitment on the twenty-fifth. I'm unable to attend. Okay, we're quickly moving on. Now we're moving into August. Wednesday, August sixth. I can't either. I'm sorry, team. Okay. How about Friday, August eighth? Yeah, Fridays are tough.
Yeah.
Unless that's like the one and only date that works for all of us.
That's how we get to like twenty-first working, so let's keep all moving.
Yeah, yeah. Wednesday, August thirteenth?
That does not work for me.
Oh darn. August thirteenth. Okay. Monday, August...
Busy enough.
I know, summers are jam-packed. Monday, August eighteenth. I am open.
I'm open then, too.
Jennifer, you're open?
I can do that.
I don't know. I might have travel.
Okay.
Supposed to get confirmed.
Okay.
Next week.
So... Is a possibility, okay?
Not sure. I will let you know as soon as...
Actually, the twenty-first can work. I thought, forgot my daughter's home. We're just not used to her. She's just that.
I don't know, I don't know Member Sidhu's schedule. I know she's traveling, so I don't know if she's back in time, so that's another one to kind of confirm. Yeah. But the twenty-first could be a placeholder. Okay, so we, July twenty-first seems to work for most, August eighteenth works for most, pending Member Ahmed's commitment. Okay, moving on to, how about, this is like every day this week, so Tuesday, the nineteenth, Wednesday, well, I'll just move, Tuesday, the nineteenth, August nineteenth. I'm open that date as well. Anyone else have issues with the nineteenth?
If I have, my challenge is that if I have travel, it'll be that whole week.
That whole week, okay.
But I just don't know. It's a work commitment that hasn't been confirmed.
Sure, fair enough. Okay. We also have the dates on the twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second of that week.
When is that, what, the next week?
The twenty-third, Saturday.
Okay.
Twenty-second may be a problem for me.
Okay.
That's school move-in weekend.
Back to school, yeah. Okay.
She offered one Saturday, but it's not until the twenty-seventh, so that is kind of, of September.
September Labor Day week.
Oh, September.
August, or September twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a wedding. I'll be out of town.
Okay, so that's off, off the table then. Okay. All right, so what I'm hearing is that July twenty-first is a possibility and August eighteenth and nineteenth are also good dates, again, pending what we hear back from others.
Yeah, I have to check on the twenty-first, but I think that's fine. That's this Monday, right?
That would be, yes, this coming Monday.
I have a paper calendar.
That's okay. That's fine.
The old-fashioned way.
Yep, yep. That, that helps us at least whittle down this list and then if you can get back to me with, you know, finalization, that'd be great. Okay. All right, let me go back to, I think, I think that's everything today, everyone.
Okay.
So I am going to adjourn the meeting at... Oh, I missed that one, sorry. I'm, that was a joke. So we do have section H, follow-up board questions. We do have one here. "If available, the board would like additional data from the spring data presentation that highlights the differences between excused and unexcused absences." Is this one still open?
Still open, I know.
It is. Jonathan is working on that data for you.
Okay, perfect.
He had some issues with download from MyStar, so he's working on it.
Okay, perfect. So that one's in process. I didn't collect any from tonight's meeting unless I missed something. Okay, all right. So that concludes the follow-up board questions and we're gonna move on to adjournment. So we'll adjourn the meeting at eight oh nine PM.